Evening, I'd like to call the needs and orders. And we'll take attendance. Thanks Stephanie. Stephanie is not here. So I'm here. John?
Present.
Alan?
Here.
Here. Greg?
Welcome.
Michelle?
Here.
Jim is in Iowa. Stephanie is not here. Jen? Jen?
Yes.
Lisa?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Julie?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
Okay, we have a forum. So tonight's agenda is a little different than usual. So the first thing before we get into the normal of routines, we're going to have a tour of the Burnham School. Hopefully, we haven't thrown you too far off the schedule while we waited for the policy committee to wrap up. But they do have a mountain of work. So I will give you that. So, tour of the school?
Sure, we're gonna start down here, so.
That's awesome.
There are times during the day that the children are all together, K through 2. And then we also understand that they get grade-specific instruction, making sure that we touch upon the specific content strands for each grade level. But the nice part about it is that if we see a student who's really a high achiever, it's easy to move them forward. Now, maybe the ladies might want to talk a little bit about what they do on a daily basis.
Well, the kids are divided out, K through 2. And so, we have room 1 and room 2. So when they come in, they'll put their belongings away, and it's a mixture of each grade. And they'll come in, hand folders, and then kind of just, they'll read a book, they'll draw the older.
Get settled.
Get settled. The older kids will read to the younger kids. And then we start morning meeting. We all come back in here, in this room, just around the corner. And we have our morning meeting, which is a great way to start the day, all together. And then we generally break up into word study after that.
Right, first and second graders word study together, based on their levels, though. Kindergarten does word study with Amy. They do a different program called Foundations, which is more learning their letters, their letter sounds, phonics, kind of based.
And then we meet back in our room, homerooms, for snack. So again, it's all mixed for snack. And then we then split again for reading workshop. And generally kindergarten is in here for reading workshop, and 1 and 2 are in here for reading workshop.
Right, 1 and 2's reading is very similar. Their curriculums are very similar. So they mix a lot together, work on the same skills. But again, a great specific standards also, and working on their own reading level.
And the same thing for writing.
Right.
1, 2, our writing is very similar, just different levels, different lengths in their piece, different expectations. And when our K friends will work on different standards that they're hitting in this room.
Right. For math, it is based on grade levels. So I teach kindergarten math, Amy does second grade math, and Mrs. Agerson helps us with first grade math. Doesn't mean that we don't see the first graders. We do in math instruction. She just helps us out teaching them while we're meeting with the other classes, too.
So it's nice with staff that we can have multiple groups going at once. So we can have some independent students, as well as some direct instruction with the adults. The other thing that we've done, and we'll walk, come on, let's walk into this next room. We're experimenting with alternative seating. We do know that children very often need different kinds of seating arrangements, so. And you'll probably see these in all three schools, but we ordered a bunch of these nice mobile chairs, because sometimes kids need to move around. So children can choose to sit in a typical chair or on a stool. If it's reading time, we also know that we want children to enjoy reading. So very often, if they want, take a lounge a little bit while they read.
And we have a stand-up desk in the other room, too.
Right.
And the desk cycle, just.
Yes, desk cycle.
And they all, so they don't have any, they don't have specific desks. So what they have is cubbies. So they'll come over and get things that they need and just sit at whatever table they want. Or if we say, alright, you four go into the yellow table, you four red table, and we just rotate through that way.
And the materials are similar in both rooms, so that children don't have a hard time finding them. So they all have these little kitties, you know, filled with the crayons and the scissors or whatever they need. And so they know exactly where to get them in either room.
And they have material station here in this room and in the same exact spot in the other room, so they know where to get things in each room. So everything flows very nicely. And with the opening, you know, we can, we can, you know, Ms. Bray, I can talk easily, you know, catch up quickly, and always have an eye on the kids, so it works out great.
And the students are so comfortable with it. They just flow between the two classrooms without a problem.
Very, the transitions are great.
Yeah.
Any questions? I'm gonna move on upstairs. Come on, let's go upstairs.
Do you see any acceleration of the kindergartners now that they're exposed to the second graders?
Well, I think they, they always want to try to, they're, the first and second graders are role models to them. So they want to try to read like them, or read with them, or write like them, or try, alright, look at, why, look what I can do, and look what they.
Right, they like to try things out with the big kids. It's the big kids.
Probably at the end of the year, you'll have an idea of how advanced these little kids are.
Oh, definitely, absolutely.
I think what we see is the transition at the beginning of the school year. It's a quick transition to start the school year, because the little ones just follow the older students. So the routines are easier to build in during that first week of school, and they just follow along with the other kids.
Right, it's easier for us, too, because we have helpers, and we have, they're great guides for our kindergarten friends.
Okay, question for you. In what ways is this, what are the advantages of this particular type of charter? What do you see as the principal advantages?
Well, definitely having the first and second graders as role models for the kindergartners. And we have so many, we have 16 kindergartners. So having those older kids as role models is definitely a benefit. They get to learn, whether it's reading with them or writing with them, they get to learn from them and just see where they're headed. And that's, oh, I'm gonna be able to do that soon, too. So it's just kind of give them a guide of where they're headed, and giving them that power, like, oh, I can do that.
And we also have a great support and great team in here with Mrs. Bray, myself, and then also our parents. Everyone works really well together. You feel, you feel the support, and, you know, everyone, it just.
It's a nice flow.
It's a nice flow.
I think there's a good sense of community, too. With our smaller classrooms, it's nice having a larger group of students that can play together. I mean, we've always had a sense of community here, but I think it's really enhanced since we've done this.
All right, and what's your, what's your biggest challenge?
Um, you know, I guess the variation in the classes. There are 16 kindergartners, there's three first graders, and there's eight second graders. So I think that's probably, it's, it's not necessarily a challenge.
It's a busy day.
It's a busy day.
It's a busy day, and just transitioning, going from one to the next, and just having your mindset. You know, I'm teaching kindergarten math right now, but I'm moving to second grade reading next time. So it's just having my mindset, you know, always on track. Okay, this is what I'm doing next. I need to be prepared, there's stuff ahead of myself.
And being, and we have to be in sync with each other.
Right. Time-wise, too.
Time-wise. So we'll check and be, are we ready, are we ready, you know?
And I think planning's a really big important part. And I think they're doing, both teams are doing a fantastic job with that. But that's because we built in some real good common planning periods throughout the week. That was, that was important, that was purposeful, because they need to be able to plan for three years of instruction. They'll look at those content strands and be able to hit them where they needed to hit them. And also to look at where we can blend some things.
Right.
So social studies is an area where they can blend, especially down in the lower grades, K through 2. Community is huge. So we can do a variety of different things, K through 2, that really encompass community, and do a huge unit with that. So that's really, I think, great. Come on, let's go.
Oh, you answered it. I was gonna ask how many students, but you answered it. Thank you.
Come on, let's go on upstairs. So we're in the hallway, so I can sort of explain how the setup is up here. So the grades 3 through 5, and the two teachers are here. Grades 3 through 5 utilize three rooms. The room right behind you over here is called the Innovation Room. And we'll have a chance to go in all three. In the Innovation Room, we have a combination of math, science, and Makerspace. We are going to be creating a second Makerspace, because this room is used so much with, you know, three different levels of math, as well as science, and Makerspace for our K through 2. They can come up here to use it, but the time is limited. So in our art room, we're gonna create a second space. And in this room over here, this is called the Book Nook. So there's tons of leveled books. We do a lot of language arts in there. We do small group in there. A lot of, you know, if we have to do reading tasks, all kinds of things that have to do with literacy are in that room. And in the third room over here is our community room. So they begin their day there with morning meeting, and they do whole group things in that room. They also have their animals, which you'll also have a chance to see. But they'll do social studies in there. There might be some reading in there. There might be small group instruction going on there. But the kids move from room to room, depending upon what subject area is going on. So why don't we start with the Innovation Room? And feel free to ask, we have some students here, or ask the teachers if they have any questions. But in here, Cam has a lot of math instructions, so maybe she can, where'd she go? She uses paper on the table, so kids can then work through their math. Do you want to talk a little bit about your math?
Um, well, the math that the kids, instead of giving them scratch paper, they have the opportunity just to write all over the paper as they go. And then we keep just putting paper over it, and maybe we'll look back at it in June at the September papers and see where they are.
So you can see in here, our Makerspace things are in here. We're just going through, experimenting with lots of things. We have our sewing machine. I have a little sewing group. Lots of fun.
Yeah, yeah. So we're learning to explore some of these tools. They actually, you know, have to go through the steps of learning how to use a tool.
Yes.
There will be a shelf built by the, the kids. They're building it. They are, with Mr. Macassay, yes. They're building it, though. The shelf is coming.
And you'll get a pen today. We have a group of students, "Just Be Kind" buttons. So you'll leave today with your "Just Be Kind" buttons. So they're creating buttons to go with our Ben's Bells kindness campus, the initiative that we're doing, so. But again, science is done in here, as well as all the math.
And right now, the squares are the Mayflower, so we're doing a simulation with the Mayflower. So the kids are actually sitting in these.
That's the black pearl.
Black, black. That's, um, our thing, the black pearl.
No, but why are they 3x6?
They're boats. Because they're, like, basically our boats.
Yeah, but why are they 3x6?
Because 3x6 is the real space that all the pilgrims got on the Mayflower.
That's the space you have to live in.
For our family.
For our fam, family, all your things that you were bringing.
How many days did it take them to get a proper seat?
66.
And they never changed their clothes?
And they had to clean it.
Yeah. We just got out of these today, though. They were able to come ashore.
Reach land.
They're not coming. Everyone has traveled. Let's travel.
Let's travel.
So in here is our Book Nook. Again, we have some alternative seating.
Nice.
Yeah. We got some new chairs, so the kids wrote them, okay? For their visitors.
Very nice.
No spelling errors.
Oh, no.
Oh, that's great. They look like Dana White over there, right?
On independent reading, the kids can sit in bean bags, or they can sit on the floor, or in the chairs, or we have a lot of alternative seating for them.
What's your favorite gadget in here? The chairs, maybe?
Yes. Yeah.
All right, so we'll visit the community room.
We're pets.
Our community rooms are next.
Pets and cocos.
Oh, I'm sure.
These are my hamsters. I brought them to school because.
Oh, my goodness, how many do you have in there?
Just two.
Oh, that's so.
They're cuddled up right there. Maybe it's Frankie.
Does he live here?
Do you vote on their name?
Um, no. I take them home once in a while. She picks them.
Who's in charge of feeding all these critters? Who's in the middle?
I, I do these, I do these guys. Those are her.
These are hamsters. They're dwarfs.
What's in his pen? Nothing right here? Make sure you're definitely talking about with these animals, what you know about these animals, what you're learning about them.
Did you have to read about the animals when you got them?
Oh, yeah.
Elena, why don't you tell them what happened with them?
Did you learn anything interesting about them? Ah, so that's why he's always a big guy.
Is that a baby gerbil?
I think a little gerbil, right? Does he have a hamster wheel for the playoffs?
Oh, it's, um.
Because we created the space for K through 2 by breaking a hole.
It's a nice space. She likes the largest space for me.
This is music.
So do they get music every day? Or is it just rotating bases?
Yes. What, in the whole time of the week? Now, don't forget, she's a chair.
So they get to pick their own instruments?
Um, in grades 4 and 5, they have choices of instruments.
Right.
She uses a lot of different instruments with students.
Right.
Fifth graders in the past have used ukulele, have learned to play the ukulele. We have a young lady, her Makerspace time is teaching herself how to play the ukulele. So it's pretty, it's pretty neat.
That's great to get music, it's good to know.
But she uses drums, she uses shaker, she does a lot of movement and songs, so it's really wonderful.
Ever mix the grades when they teach the music?
Uh, yeah, we do. We absolutely do. Kindergarten, because there's so many of them, tend to have their specials separate. The telepathy plays a little easier.
Right.
But in grades 3, 4, 4 and 5, their specials are all together, so they differentiate within that group. And that's for all specials. My first and second graders have their specials together. So what we tried to do is back up the specials so that the teachers have nice, long planning periods, so that they can do some planning together.
How long does their planning period last, then, if they back up the specials?
Um, some days, a couple days, it's an hour long. And then every other day is a half hour. Which is, which is good, you know? It gives them plenty of time to, to do something.
To get themselves organized.
Right. But they're great about, you know, working on the weekends, you know, putting it on a Google Doc, so they can both share it. Spot right here, so that you can do small groups. It's mostly Legos, Lego-type things. So we can have a group here if they wanted to work on building Legos. Yeah, this is our computer lab. Meeting down here, we can send out anything. We're like, what? I know. I sent Karen an email, though, just to let them know.
Do they actually do art here? Does the art teacher use the lab as a wall?
Um, they're all connected, so the library, art, and technology can all work together if they want to.
Well, that's great.
And I'll show you our little library, too. And, you know, you all know, I mean, this is wonderful. Our district is really, we're all blessed to be able to have new technology every third year. It's really wonderful. So having this up-to-date is really terrific. And our new 3D printer over there is pretty neat. The kids are loving it. Takes a long time to make something, but, yeah. It's meticulous. Yes, totally. But it's pretty neat.
It can take hours for one project. Oh, yeah, because of what they design. It can take hours for it, too.
Someone made me a vase. Two days.
Really? Yes, you can Google it. Your 3D printer vehicle.
That must've taken a while. Great exploration.
That is fantastic. So that it's not theoretical, but real.
Yeah, exactly.
That's great. It is pretty neat.
I mean, this is a pretty simplistic one, but.
Twenty hundred times in this building for 3 through 5, because they can choose to come down when they need it. And so they use their Chromebooks upstairs, but if, say they're doing some research project and they need the librarian to help and our tech support, they'll be down here doing research with folks. So it's a good resource. Now, our little ones come all the time, because they're learning to keyboard, and they're learning all about, you know, manipulating a computer. So, yeah, it's nice. It's really wonderful. The Book Nook is, has to do with classroom instruction. So that's level of text. And books that they typically use are 3, 4, 5, 4, 5.
So this is for the whole school?
This is for the whole school.
Now, although we're really little, we have about 5,000 volumes in here, which is really neat. And the children also go to the town library. So we have a nice sidewalk that is great, that kids can walk over. Love the program, and so they have an opportunity to take out books here, as well as next door. And so that's a really great thing.
How often do they come to the library, the school library?
Every week.
Like, once a week?
Yes.
And is that all for, like, independent reading?
Um, they come to the library to take out books. There's usually some activities that the librarians do with the kids. So with new library clerks here, it's a team, sister team, which is really wonderful. There, I told them to come up with ideas and come to me and tell me what you would like to see done. They're very creative, and it's nicely, it's really inviting to come in here, the amount that they've done. And also, they're connecting with Makerspace, too. So if there are children that need to do some research, they're a great resource to go to. Come on, I'll show you the art room. And again, all these rooms, there's a door in between all of them, so that you can very nicely flow between them. So this is our little art room. So because our library is so little, we don't have space for a smart board. But if the librarian would like to do something, she can always use this room to show the kids a virtual tour somewhere, if she wanted to do that. So she'll still have access to that. But Mrs. Manley, who is in all three of the elementary schools, does a wonderful job. She often will show children different pieces of art by taking a virtual tour, which is really wonderful. But does a great job. So this is the room where I'm gonna add a second Makerspace for the little ones. So I want to add some more supplies in here, so that they can come down here, too. Any questions?
Do they actually use this room? Because it's way too clean.
They actually use.
They clean it just for us.
No, she does, yes. Yeah.
And do they have an equivalent amount of time in art, as well as music?
Mm-hmm, yes, they do. Yeah, they do, they do. So, yeah. Art's a little bit longer for most grades. Kindergarten's a little less, just because they're in here a longer period of time because of the project base. Okay, that's our school.
Thank you very much.
Um, Ethel, I hope you enjoyed our tour. And you hope you enjoyed seeing a multi-age configuration. We're proud of it, and we're excited. And we see students really prospering in this new configuration. At this time, I'd like to introduce our music teacher, Jennifer Dwyer. She's here at Erna, and she's also at Washington Friar. And she's gonna give us just a little piece into our winter concert in the musicals song.
Thank you, Mrs. Kamala. I prefer to do as little talking as possible, because nobody's here to see me. So I'd like the Burnham School chorus, please, very carefully to stand up. And they are going to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about what we will be doing tonight.
Welcome to Burnham School.
My name's Kamala. My name's Lea, and this is the Burnham School chorus. We meet once a week before school starts to be our 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders. Tonight, we will sing you a song called "Dona Nobis Pacham." That is Latin for "granted peace." We will be singing a cappella, which means without any instrument. We hope you all enjoy it.
Here we go. Dona Nobis Pacham, Pacham. Dona Nobis 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 Pacham.
Our last song is called "Peace Like a River." Thank you for listening.
I've got peace like a river. I've got peace like a river. I've got peace like a river in my soul. I've got peace like a river. I've got peace like a river. I've got peace like a river in my soul. I've got love like an ocean. I've got love like an ocean. I've got love like an ocean in my soul. I've got love like an ocean. I've got love like an ocean. I've got love like an ocean in my soul. I've got joy like a fountain. I've got joy like a fountain. I've got joy like a fountain in my soul. I've got joy like a fountain. I've got joy like a fountain. I've got joy like a fountain in my soul.
Another round of applause for the Burnham School chorus.
Okay, that was wonderful. Thank you very much. For small, for big, and fantastic job. So now, our next presentation is going to be a little video. We put the video together to capture a glimpse into our multi-age classrooms. So you'll see the K through two as well as the three through five. You'll see in our video how our year began with establishing our new school norms and the work that we've been doing in building a kind community where all students feel significant, respected, and engaged. We are growing monsets, cultivating kindness, and building empathy with the implementation of such initiatives as the Ben's Bells Be Kind Project. Our students and staff are working hard to innovate using engaging multi-sensory activities. Our students are engaged in language-rich activities and newly designed active learning spaces. They participate in academic choice activities in our school curriculum, social curriculum, and in rigorous science, technology, engineering investigations. We are proud of Burnham School. Our culture of kindness, collaboration, fun, and innovation is helping our student-centered community to thrive. Our close-knit collaborative multi-age community is fully embraced by the Burnham School community. I hope you enjoy. Burnham School, a multi-age experience. Autumn 2017. Our year began with establishing our new school rules and building a kind community where all of our students feel significant, respected, and engaged. A close-knit collaborative multi-age community is becoming our way of life.
Today is National August Day. Please enter classes in virtual theaters.
Our students and staff are working hard to innovate using engaging multi-sensory activities and encouraging self-direction. We are growing monsets.
I'm an August Day person.
We are cultivating kindness and building empathy. Our students are engaged in language-rich, active learning spaces and activities. They participate in academic choice activities.
I'm all over my hair. And now, my hair is covered in all of them. I'm not going to shave it.
Our social curriculum, second step. And rigorous science, technology, engineering, and back investigation.
It's called force. We said it's called force. Everybody say force.
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 We are proud of Burnham School. Our culture of kindness, collaboration, fun, and innovation is helping our students and our community to thrive. So we really wanted to focus on communities as a core of us. I also wanted to talk a little bit about one grade. We saw students laying on the floor. And they weren't sleeping. We really are embracing many of the activities and the tenets of the Ben's Bells. And one of those meditation. So our nervousness really taken on how to get students to be relaxed at school, what to do when they're anxious, and around a little bit of meditation. And it's really working and I feel like the students, there's a calmness throughout our building. I know it's wonderful. At this time, I also wanted to share a couple of letters for parents, short ones. And we do have one more parent who was willing to share. We thought it'd be nice if we had just a few parents just talk to you about their feelings about the whole time grade configuration because it is so new. So I had Mrs. Romanoff sent an email and she said here are some of her thoughts about the multi-age classrooms. The three through five classroom configuration has been a great learning atmosphere for my son. We found the teachers to be well-organized and very knowledgeable of the different developmental stages of learning. Nathan, my son, is engaged in his learning and cannot wait to tell us what new things he's learned each day. We are finding his learning to assert his voice as well as listen to his peers' perspective. It is remarkable collaborative learning environment. Another set of parents, Michelle Little Rock Mascaroli. Dear Principal Kolela, I wanted to write to you and the staff at Burnham School to express our appreciation again for welcoming our daughter as well as our family to the Burnham School community. In the two short months that have passed, such a positive impact has already been seen. Addison leaves school each day with a smile on her face and a car ride full of conversation of the day's happening. We still feel just as strongly as not more for the same factors that initially drew us to Burnham School. The teacher-to-student ratio along with the combined upgrades allow a safe learning environment for students who learn at different paces. The opportunity to be challenged and/or required for their exploration. We feel this type of environment also encourages friendship development across all age levels, forming a greater sense of community and peer-to-peer learning. Makerspace and classroom animals have also had a tremendous impact on Addison as well. Makerspace has aided in challenging our daughter to look within and broaden her creativity. It has further afforded her the opportunity to imagine, create, and be responsible for concepts of each creation. In addition, the classroom pets have given Addison so much joy. They are a little safe haven for our animal lover. Lastly, Mrs. Calanty, Mrs. Lucchese, and Mr. McKessy are wonderful as we have found all of Burnham School's staff to be. They have provided a safe learning environment, enabling her to feel comfortable, to share and come out of her shell. This gift is huge. In two short months, our daughter is gaining her confidence back and enjoying learning. We truly appreciate the opportunity to take part in the Burnham School experiment and thank you in advance for your continued support. And then I just invite, if you'd like to come on out? Thank you. This is Ray Gordon-Burrow. She has a son Clayton in the K through two configuration. Not her hair.
No, it's okay.
Anything to read, I'll let you know. And I will also say, of course, my husband sends him apologies because he's really the one who wants to be here today. He's very vocal and very, very excited that our son Shane is here. However, he's been traveling for about six weeks and he just got home and Shane won't let him leave the house. But we are so very excited and very grateful to be here. So let's start by saying that. We chose to come to Burnham. We started because we really liked the configuration of the K through two space. Shane is not an only child, but his sister's 22. So we liked the idea that we kind of had siblings sort of in a classroom experience. Be led by elders and he can't get enough of the two-year-olds on the playground. So he can't wait to be a second grader, but little ones coming up again as well. We also liked the small classroom size. We came from Milford and while we knew that, you know, if we finally went to school there, we just wanted something smaller and more, a more caring environment where we knew the principal, where we knew his teachers. Anytime we had any questions or concerns, they have been immediately addressed by both teachers and by the principal of the school. And so we're just very grateful for that as well. He comes over every day. He loves it. He's already making friends on the playground. Everywhere he goes, it doesn't really matter what age. He also goes to eighth. Sometimes he asks to go every day, but he goes every once in a while, even though he would like to go more. The most important reason that we also love being here is the responsive classroom. Our, we own a company and the very bulk of what we do is those speakers and to colleges that are helping people cross lines of difference and we're basically peace educators. So the idea that we can carve our son off with a responsive classroom experience where he's learning respect and caring and integrity and kindness is probably equally as important to us as the education that he's getting. Which brings me to the final point that I knew that he'd come here and it's proved to be true. He will not stop counting in Spanish. It's constant and he comes along, he's just counting, counting, counting. He's so excited. He's learning all the time and he's not really relaxing yet. And I'm just grateful, grateful to you all. And so, that's about it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so do you have any questions before we wrap up? Do you have any questions for our teachers who were sitting seated there? Good. So they're going to distribute a thank you card for our students as well as you get your own adjusting time button. And that's part of Ben's Bell initiative our students are doing. So lastly, we are proud to be a part of a district establishing the unique opportunities and choices for our families from the high school level where students will soon have a choice of a traditional high school setting or a head of X STEM. And at the elementary level, our families can also choose a more traditional setting in two of our schools or a multi-age configuration at Burnham School. These are certainly exciting times for Region 12. Thank you.
No, there's no microphones standing, so we won't have to remember to press the button.
Did everyone get a... Oh, love it. Right on there. The kids all learned how to design and then paste the buttons themselves.
Very nice. All right, so it's time for, opportunity for the public to comment on the agenda items. See, no one. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. There are no items on the consent agenda, so we'll move right into the chairs report right after I put my button on. No. The minutes from the previous meeting were not posted. We'll just pick that up at the next meeting, including the minutes from the retreat as well. I thought when we were here, it seemed like a long time ago, but a number of us were here in the beginning of the school year and had an opportunity to get the tour, a private tour, by Kathy and a few of the staff. And we all kind of walked away from that thinking, it really left an impression to see how the idea of mixed grades actually came together physically. Because it really, you know, you can describe it, you can talk about it. And I heard a couple of people as we were going through the tour, kind of echoing the same thing that we felt when we came in, which is what then gave us the inspiration to say, hey, maybe we should have a board meeting here and give the board an opportunity to see how this has taken shape. You know, considering the road that we took to get here, I think it was worth the investment of our time to see that. So I hope you all felt the same thing for the same reasons. And one of the, one of the other reasons why we wanted to be here is because this could very well be a fixture or a part of Region 12 for a long time. And what we don't know is how. For example, if we have demographic pressures at Booth, this could be something that Booth needs to think about as we go forward. It, we don't know how it's going to find its place long-term in the district. And right now, there's probably not enough people who are in the district who know enough about it. So you're getting a lot of, I think, reactions to what they think it could be rather than what it really is. And so this is a way to kind of break that, break the ice a little bit. Get a few more of us educated, have it on film. Somebody in the quiet of their home would like to see what it looks like, maybe motivate some more questions as we continue to socialize this concept in the district. So I'd ask each of us to think about ways we can continue to socialize this. Because I think the last thing we want is if we have to move this to another school, I say have to because the numbers are compelling us to think this way. We don't want it to be a problem, you know? Not a shock to the system, but something that people, who knows, maybe even start lobbying for instead of, you know, turn this more into a poll than a push. So I'd ask everyone to think about that as we go forward. Maybe talk to Roxbury, continue to talk to, hi, welcome back. She snuck in. To think about that going forward. So I thank you very much for coming here this evening and making this work. That's all I had to say for this evening. Pat?
Okay, I want to thank Kathy and staff. Great job tonight. They do a great job every day. It's a wonderful place to learn and tonight was wonderful. So thank you and thank you staff and the kids. I want to continue. Today is World Kindness Day. I did put in front of you, these are kindness cards from Ben's Bells. If those of you have not heard, Ben's Bells was started in Arizona by a mom who lost a young boy, young son. And it came out to Connecticut right around the time of 12:14. There is a Ben's Bells in Bethel, right on Stony Hill, across from, well, it's across from Armandos, but it's right near the diner and you can go there at night or on Saturday and Sunday and you can help make some of these. You will find Ben's Bells hanging in different areas of Connecticut in the Northeast. The idea of the point is to recognize kindness and share kindness and pass it on. So I give it to each of you, hoping that you'll pass it on. These are the stickers that you'll see around. This is really the Ben's Bells logo. If you go online, you can learn a lot more about it. And all of our schools are Ben's Bell schools in different levels of participation. But if you want to run a good school and a great school district, you really need to remember to be kind and develop that culture of kindness because you can't do one without the other. So I'm happy we got to see that all over the school tonight. It was very nice. I am happy to say that, well, I wish more were coming, but Michelle and I are going to the K-Caps convention on Friday and Saturday, so we will represent the district and bring back as much information as we can. If anybody still can come, you still can, we can still get you in there. So just let me know. We'll be happy to register you. I want to again congratulate the students who are on Fox 61 again, which was very exciting. I had a meeting today with the instructional leaders and Shiel Gambino said you only get on Fox 61 once a year. They rotate the schools and we've already been on twice. So that says a lot about Breann Pitt and what's going on in that digital environment. I want to congratulate Karen Files, who received a certification in technology leadership, which is really huge to help us move along with our technology and our STEM program and a focus not only on how kids can be consumers of technology, but how they can be producers of technology and what they can do to forward their learning by using technology. So we're very excited about that. We have one leave of absence, a first-grade teacher at Booth Free. And so that is on there. And that is my report.
Thank you. Any questions, Rebecca? Well, we'll go on to the next. There are no action items this evening, so unless anyone has any comments they'd like to share about what they saw at the school, I'll move for adjournment. Is there any questions, any comments? Nope? Okay. Have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.
Thank you again.